The roll call goes after the opening statement.
Okay. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2020 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the eighth day of December 2019. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 20th, 2019 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the eighth day of April and has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/meetings. Choose the Planning tab to view. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, the coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the eighth day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to connect orally should virtually raise their hand using the button at the bottom right of the participant panel. Actually, maybe that's the middle of the participant panel? I think I was.
That's correct, Louise. It's actually the middle of the bottom of the screen.
Okay, good.
For attendees, it's in a different location.
Right, okay. Or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the Board will be muted. If you're having difficulty accessing this feature, use the Q&amp;A box, the Q&amp;A dialogue box, to let tech support know, and they will try to assist you. I will repeat those instructions when we get to public comment parts of the meeting, so you'll maybe hear that again. Roll call, please.
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Bella?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arnie?
Here.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements? Do members of the Board or staff have announcements?
Nope.
Okay, I would just encourage people, if you start hearing noise in your own house, it's pretty likely that we're all hearing it too, so if that happens, please mute yourself and just as a matter of protocol. So Mia is here now. Was she here for roll call? I'm sorry. Okay, so let the record show that Ms. Sacks has joined.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks. So we have discussion items, three discussion items, an update to the Princeton Master Plan and two ordinance referrals. And formal action is expected on the master plan element. We are discussing and potentially acting on the green building and environmental sustainability element of the master plan. This has been in the works for some years, and I'd be remiss if I did not point out that Xenon, Tex Arnie, and Sophie Glovier, and Heidi Fichtenbaum from Princeton Environmental Commission played a big role in making this happen and writing and correcting drafts. The Watershed Institute had some great comments. Sustainable Princeton has made great contributions. David Cohen has given it a ton of attention and made it better, and Wanda Gunning has as well. So with that, I will open it up for discussion and sit back and stop talking myself.
Madam Chair, I was just going to jump in quickly before, I'd love to give the time.
Thank you. I should have punted to you first, Michael.
That's okay. I'm overcoming my shyness and I'll speak up.
You're shrinking by what you're.
Really, I want to give time so that the members of the Board and other Princetonians who really worked hard on this speak about it. I came in at the very end of this, but I'm very proud to be associated with it. It's an interesting element for our master plan because even though it's very much in conformance with past master plans and master plan updates and reexamination reports in terms of what it wants to accomplish to make Princeton a cleaner, greener, better community to live in, it's also setting a tone for the future. It's a pivot point for us. And the reason why, as you'll hear from others, that the master plan Subcommittee and the Planning Board and others wanted to, and the Sustainable Princeton and other groups wanted to do this element now was it really sets a tone for not only, it will not only help shape all the development that we're anticipating in the near future through our affordable housing efforts and other projects, but it'll also set a green tone for the upcoming, hopefully, comprehensive update of our master plan. So the staff is very excited about it, and I think that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you for that. That's helpful. I appreciate that perspective, and I agree. David?
And I would just like to add that in setting a new tone from a thematic standpoint, I hope this element also sets a new tone from a format perspective. I think it's really clearly organized. We have a number of subject headings, and each one has goals. Each one has strategies to reach those goals, and I think that it's readable and can provide a model for how we might organize a thorough update of the master plan, of the other elements of the master plan as we're going forward.
Thank you for that. Are there other comments among Board members or staff?
Yeah, I have one. I'd just like to say that the HPC appreciates the strategy for encouraging historic preservation and mentions embodied energy in existing structures. So we really appreciate that being included.
Thank you for calling. That was a late addition and a really good one, and I think it was Mr. La Place who suggested the embodied energy language and then explained it to us all.
Thank you.
Although, you know what? It also might have been Sustainable Princeton because they were, anyway.
Yeah, my comments were much simpler. I just feel the greenest kind of construction is the kind that already exists, you know? Recycle a building, keep it.
Yay.
Ordinarily, Louise, I would let the misattribution pass, but I want to take credit for this one.
Oh.
I'm also the liaison.
After all, there's so many things that you added that are worth mentioning, and I totally struck out on that one.
Well, I'm also the liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission, council liaison.
Thank you.
That's where I was coming from there.
Thank you. I'm glad to stand corrected on that. Are there other members of the Board who want to say anything? I'm not seeing any hands raised, and I will ask you, David, if there are members of the public who might have raised their hands. I can repeat the instruction if there aren't.
Why don't you do that? Yeah, nobody's raised their hands yet, and if you read the instructions, that'll give them a chance.
Okay, and I.
You do have several hands.
Several, oh, several hands.
Several have come up now, so I will go through them in order and allow them to speak.
Okay, good.
Sophie Glovier, the Chair of the Princeton Environmental Commission. Sophie should be able to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
Can, welcome.
Excellent, thank you. I just want to thank everybody who's worked on this. This is something that PEC has been working on for over three years now, and want to thank Louise for her leadership and the subcommittee, Master Plan Subcommittee, and say that at PEC, we are really excited to take this, and I hope that you will approve it, and we can get on with really the implementation and building on the great work of the Climate Action Plan, Princeton, to a greener, more sustainable place. So thank you.
Thank you.
And our next member of the public is Jim, sorry, Jim Waltman.
You can unmute yourself, Jim.
How's that? Can you hear me?
That's great, welcome.
Great, good evening. My name is Jim Waltman. I'm the Executive Director of the Watershed Institute. We work to keep water clean, safe, and healthy in central New Jersey and are located just the town to your west in Hopewell Township. I'd like to first commend the authors of this proposed master plan element and encourage this Board to adopt it. The proposal lays out an inspiring vision that with discipline and focus is attainable over the coming decades and will put Princeton as a real model for the state of New Jersey. The section on water is of particular interest to us, and we're very pleased with the goals, objectives, and strategies that are described and advocated therein. As some of you know, the Watershed is particularly focused on stormwater management and the goal of using the opportunity of redevelopment to improve the management of stormwater and improve the quality of water in our community. We can't just stop adding to the environmental injuries we've done to the planet in the past. We need to seek opportunities to repair the damage that's been done. When a property is redeveloped, that's a great opportunity to reimagine, re-envision, and repair the environment. So when buildings and other impervious surfaces are replaced, that's a great time to institute stormwater management, not just when impervious cover is expanded, but when it's replaced. So again, I want to commend the authors for this visionary document and encourage the Board to adopt it this evening.
Jim, it's Jerry Muller, I'm the Planning Board Attorney. What I should have done is sworn in both members of the public and members of the staff, and that would be Michael, and I haven't done that, so if you could raise your right hand.
Happy to.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you gave was the truth?
I do.
So sworn. And Sophie, can you get back on? I'll swear you in.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you gave was the truth?
I do.
So sworn. And Michael, if you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you gave and that you may continue to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn. Thank you.
Okay, our next member of the public is John. His last name is not appearing in the participants panel, so John, if you can identify yourself, first and last name, and Mr. Muller will swear you in as well.
I think you need to un. Can you unmute yourself? If you go down to the toolbar on the bottom on the left-hand side, there's a.
There you go. I got it. I got it. My name is John Thoney. I'm the President of Thoney Associates Environmental Planning and Engineering Design Consultants, and I was told that you were introducing a very interesting element for your master plan and that I should listen in, and so I.
John, it's Jerry Muller again, the Planning Board Attorney. I'm going to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand.
I'm raising my right hand.
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
I'm not planning on giving any testimony, just to say thank you. This seems to be a very important element to your master plan, and I'm quite content to sit here and listen to the good work that you are doing, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thoney.
And if I can just mention, I don't know if you've had a chance to access the text of the green building element. It's available on the municipality's website.
I have.
Okay, wonderful. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm reviewing it, and I think it's wonderful, but I will review in detail, and if I have specific comments, I hope that I'm perfectly allowed to provide some comments.
Sure.
And I thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Incidentally.
Mr. Thoney, you're on mute again. Did you?
I accidentally muted him.
All right, sorry. I just wanted to say that this is Thoney Associates' 40th anniversary of providing environmental consulting services in the state of New Jersey with very specific emphasis on stormwater management, and I love what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Our next attendee who would like to speak is Philip Chow. Philip, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Philip, Jerry Muller again. I'm going to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand?
Yep.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Phil Chow, 54 Patton Avenue, longtime resident, volunteer with Sustainable Princeton, and a practicing building scientist. I read through the document yesterday, and I think one big admission that I noticed, or I should say it's great to see the effort, it's wonderful that we're pushing energy efficiency, but my one concern looking at it is it doesn't really address existing buildings. You know, all the principles are addressing new builds, and if you think about the forecasting, how it might change emissions in the town, you know, you only have so many new builds per year, so you're only going to incrementally affect those new builds, but the majority of the stock is existing, and the document is really missing any kind of promotion of, like, Energy Star for upgrades inside the house with any of your heating or equipment. So I hope that's something that does get added in there because that's an important part to get existing buildings more energy efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chow. Mr. Tex Arnie, do you want to speak to that at all? Because I.
Yeah, I was going to write because I saw that Phil wrote a comment in the Q&amp;A, but I figured that I think everything needs to be verbal for the purposes of the record. But Phil, I don't know if you saw, maybe you missed the strategy, strategy number five in the energy section, which says encourage and promote energy efficiency and carbon-free energy sources for all existing buildings and private development. So I don't know if that's what you were hoping to see or if that wasn't enough. I mean, we talk about, you know, we have even some strategies in that section, so.
That section, okay, all right.
We also do talk about retrofitting or upgrading energy systems and efficiency in municipal facilities when they are built or renovated.
Yeah. So I think that there's a number of, I guess, actions related to energy, I mean, not only in the energy section, but also in the green building section. And so I think that, I think certainly, I mean, I'm not going to read through the document right now, but I mean, I think certainly the intention was that the municipality would be moving their existing buildings to more energy efficiency through good active energy management, but also trying to push the community at large in terms of energy efficiency through the various policies. And, you know, we don't get super prescriptive. I mean, we pay that we should be suggesting incentive programs, kind of the best practices in terms of promoting energy efficiency. Unfortunately, there are limits in terms of what a municipality can do in terms of making the general public become energy efficient. So I think that we certainly should be moving towards promoting it as much as possible, but, you know, as much as we possibly can within the.
Thank you, Zanin.
It's a good thing to call out. I just want to quickly add that I think more and more of the applications that we see at the Board, Planning Board and zoning Board, well, no, I'm sorry, not zoning Board necessarily, but are redevelopment applications, and those do sort of by definition relate to existing, not always existing structures, but almost always existing structures and buildings, and so those will have to be retrofitted to a higher standard if the ordinances are put in place that carry out the recommendations and strategies that are articulated in this element of the master plan.
Yeah. Yeah, I should also mention.
There are other members.
Oh, sorry.
To comment, I'm sorry, I don't want to shut you up, I'm just.
No, 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 it's okay.
Thank you.
I just have one more member of the public who has raised their hand. It's Christine Simington from Sustainable Princeton, and I'm going to allow her to talk.
Christine, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Thank you. I'm Christine Simington. I'm the Program Director of Sustainable Princeton. On behalf of Sustainable Princeton, we'd like to commend the Environmental Commission, the Master Plan Subcommittee, and the Planning Board for considering this element and adding it to the master plan. We wholeheartedly support its adoption into the master plan. In doing so, this will enable the community to help reach its goals that were identified in the Climate Action Plan, and I do also want to highlight that in this green building and environmental sustainability element, it does include actions that will help low and moderate income households also participate in a clean energy future. Thank you.
Thank you. That, I appreciate your calling that out. Are there any other folks who have expressed an interest in addressing the Board?
That's it.
Well, before I call for a motion, I do want to just say that I'm really sorry that our Chairwoman Wanda cannot be here because she has really been a champion of moving this forward, and, you know, we've talked about it multiple times, you know, as we walk home from meetings, and, you know, I know how much it matters to her, and I'm sorry that she is not leading the meeting where we're voting on it, but without further ado, is there, I guess. Please, Ms. Capizoli, go ahead.
I, sorry, I just had one more comment. I just wanted to point out to the previous speaker that at the Historic Preservation Commission, we ask every applicant about sustainable features, so we are addressing that at least in the historic community.
I also, oh, Alvin, do you want to speak, say something?
No.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I was adjusting the view to who I'm looking at, specific speaker or, you know, all you guys.
Well, if it's all right, I do want to make a few quick comments because, as most of you know, this is something near and dear to me, because when I was, I don't know if I was actually technically on the Environmental Commission or if I was already on the Planning Board when, you know, we kind of started this process, but, you know, I feel like I need to have a speech prepared. Maybe I'll prepare one when we fully celebrate, but I just, just a few remarks. I do want to thank everyone who has helped in this process. I would like to echo Louise and all her acknowledgements, but I also want to acknowledge Louise for all the work that she did. I think that she did put a significant amount of effort in terms of getting this across the finish line, and I very much want to thank her very much. And I think that, you know, I think there's not too much to say at this point. I feel like we've said quite a lot in terms of the elements, and I think that it's definitely at a good point. I'm very pleased with the results and the product, and I'm also looking forward, as Michael mentioned, to the next step. I think that, you know, as I've always seen this, is that, you know, this is an ongoing process. I mean, it's a good final product for right now, and I think that, you know, it will help us move the town forward in terms of sustainability and green building. But, I mean, I don't think that planning is kind of a final result or final destination. I think that planning is an ongoing process, and I think that I look forward to moving forward with the, you know, updates to the master plan overall and kind of getting to that great vision so we can move forward as a town. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Zanin. It truly is sort of the end of the beginning. Not the end at all, and there is a lot of work ahead, both with, you know, ordinances and policies and practices, and anyway, this is just the framework we need to really get started with the rest of the work. I think the action we are able to take is to formally adopt this element of the master plan, so I would ask for a motion in a second to adopt this element.
A second.
Cohen moves it. Mr. Tex Arnie seconds. Do we want a roll call vote, or let's do that. Carrie, can you give us a roll call, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Oh, yes, definitely, yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yeah.
Mr. Tex Arnie?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda, I'm, of course, suddenly not, here we go. Ordinance referral for accessory dwelling units, ordinance number 2020-16. Mr. La Place, do you want to talk about this a bit, or are there other professionals that want to weigh in? This is your moment.
As I said in the memo that I sent out on the 16th, this ordinance amends the codes of the former borough and township of Princeton to basically make accessory dwelling units permitted accessory use in all residential zones throughout the municipality. I think maybe I would probably defer to the council president and possibly Councilwoman Sacks if they want to mention what the highlights are because they've worked very hard on it. They've kind of been in the center of it. But that's basically the purpose, is to expand housing opportunities within Princeton to make accessory dwelling units easier to, you know, develop in places where they make sense in existing buildings.
Great. Mr. Cohen, do you have anything to add?
I was actually going to defer to Ms. Sacks. She introduced this at council at our last meeting, and I'd like to give her the opportunity here as well.
Thanks, David. So this comes out of the work of the Neighborhood Character Part Two group, and also this is part of the final stage of harmonizing our ordinances, specifically the land use ordinances, and it's based on the AARP. ordinances, and it's based on the AARP ordinance for ADUs with some work by Jim Constantine. And I think it represents some of the best, from existing ordinances that were on the books from both the borough and the township. Princeton was way ahead, as I said on Monday, in having a flat ordinance in the township and having a secondary residence ordinance on the books in the borough. And so we've worked to combine those and, you know, within the framework of the AARP ordinance, and it's really exciting. So, David, did you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of items as I did on Monday night. One is that I wanted to make clear if there's anybody in the office tonight who is interested. There's a companion piece that will be coming along shortly, which will deal with requirements, updating the bulk requirements for accessory dwelling units. This ordinance that's before the board tonight is really just geared at updating the definition of this use and where it's permitted and so forth. But, and it does do a nice job of facilitating and making, you know, sort of taking some of the items, the aspects of the old borough ordinance, some of the aspects from the old township ordinance, and trying to make the final result as encouraging of accessory dwelling units as possible. But the new bulk requirements, which you'll see shortly, will actually enhance that even further.
Right.
I wanted to mention one other thing, Louise, that we have a recommended modification, and I'm not sure if Mr. La Place wants to comment on that or Mr. Mueller, if this would be the appropriate time to mention that.
No, I think it would be the appropriate time. Michael, do you want to go through the changes that Trish has passed around?
I'm not sure if I have the very latest one.
I can, I can actually do that. The latest change that came through today, we had some comments after the introduction at council on Monday night. Most specifically, there was a provision in the ordinance that restricted ADUs to only be permitted on conforming lots, lots that were, that met the size requirements of the district that they're located in. And there was a comment that, you know, if a property owner is on a smaller than standard lot, but can meet all the other bulk requirements for setbacks, for floor area ratio, for height, and so forth, that not be discouraged, that we wanted to still encourage the development of accessory dwellings under those circumstances. So that's the change that was made post Monday night was to not restrict it only to conforming lots, but to actually allow accessory dwelling units on any lot, providing that the project, the proposal meets all the other requirements, the bulk requirements of the district.
Now, the board's jurisdiction and function here is to decide whether the ordinance is consistent with the master plan, and also whether there are any other recommendations that it wishes to make, and then make a recommendation one way or another to the council. And Trish has circulated, and I know I have the latest, she actually circulated two different variations on the same thing, on the assumption that the board would be interested in including these recommendations in its report back to the council for modification of the ordinance on second reading. I think it's worthwhile for me just to read what they are so everybody knows exactly what they are, we're all on the same page.
Please.
The first is an amendment to section 17A373, which is existing small lot exceptions. At the very end of subsection one, Trish suggested the following language be removed, and this is apropos of what David was talking about. In no event shall a secondary residence be permitted on a lot that is less than 125% of the minimum lot area that is specific in this article for the zoning district in which the lot is located. And even more specifically, the second change is replace a current version of new section 10B255C3B with the following. And what it read was the lot must meet the minimum lot area that is specific in this chapter for the zoning district in which the lot is located. And the new language would be ADUs may be constructed on pre-existing undersized lots, provided that the proposed development complies with all other applicable bulk requirements. And that's the main point I think David was making. Then the third change, which is really very minor, is to add the following, a new subsection to 10B225C3. In the event of any conflict between the provisions of this section and any other provisions of the borough or township code, the provisions of this section shall control. So those are the three changes that I guess have been discussed and that Trish laid out in written form.
Those sound like very wise changes to me. Are there any other comments or things that council members or staff want to bring to the fore?
I would just say at this point that this proposed ordinance is very much in conformance with the master plan as it stands now with subsequent reexamination reports, particularly the latest one from 2017, which talks about pursuing zoning changes to permit a variety of uses and housing opportunities in Princeton, also to, that we need to pursue smart growth planning principles to address housing needs in Princeton. This is certainly smart growth in terms of pursuing additional dwelling units in existing neighborhoods and buildings. And again, another goal that was mentioned in the 2017 master plan reexamination report, the importance of maintaining a range of housing opportunities in Princeton for all, for a diverse population and a range of types and economic desires, I mean, demands for housing.
So with that, would, do we, I assume we, you know, there's a motion and second and a vote to, you know, refer this back to the, to the council with the recommendation that they incorporate the amendments and changes that you read earlier, Jerry?
Yes, and that they approve the ordinance. And the only additional item is that the board finds that the ordinance, as amended or without the amendment, is consistent with the master plan.
Yes.
And I would just comment, there might be a member of the public who would like to comment, if you want to give that opportunity. I don't know if you want to wait till after we have a motion.
No, I will, let's, let's hear from the member of the public first.
I'm not promising that there's someone. There's a name I recognize, somebody I thought might want to comment.
But no one has raised their hands.
I have a question, actually.
Yes, Mr. Quinn.
Not a member of the public, but, well, I am actually, I'm a private citizen. I asked this question to, to Council President Cohen, and I don't know that he answered, or he could have, and it's likely that I forgot. But on page five, we make in E, we introduce the notion of a habitable room, and I don't know, I'm assuming that somewhere in the code elsewhere, it defines what a habitable room is. And the question that I asked, I had for Mr. Cohen was, does that include a kitchen and a bathroom? Because if they are considered habitable rooms, then this is basically just creating efficiency units. So I don't think that that's true, but I just want to double check.
Yes. We actually, there was some back and forth around this, whether we needed to incorporate a definition of habitable rooms. But as it turns out, there was already one in the zoning ordinance. As you surmise, it does not include kitchens, it does not include bathrooms, it does not include dinets, you know, it's, and it also does not include spaces with a ceiling height under six foot, six inches, I believe. So there are a lot, you know, you could have a sleeping loft or something like that. It'd be excluded from that, the count of habitable rooms as well.
So I'm assuming a first floor, a first floor basement, or a, not a first floor, a basement where the ceiling height is, is six feet or lower would not be considered habitable?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So in terms of the, the use of habitable rooms and, you know, like limits to numbers, we should, we should think of it as interchangeable with bedrooms effectively?
Well, I mean, a living room or full dining room would be considered a room, a den would be considered a room.
Sorry, we lost the internet for a while.
So.
Mind it.
It's not just, it's not just bedrooms. You could have three, but, and in fact, an early draft of this limited the number of bedrooms that were permitted, but that's very difficult for the zoning officer to enforce because you can have a room that looks like a bedroom, and the owner can claim, oh, it's not a bedroom, it's a den. So, or, you know, or home office or whatnot. So it's a lot cleaner to define your limit in terms of habitable rooms, which are very easy to discern.
Thank you.
Other comments, other questions?
Sorry about disappearing, but Town Hall is back online.
Good to know.
I'd like to say we missed you, but I didn't realize, I didn't realize you were gone.
Oh, well, okay. I was hoping I'd hear you be doing a German, but.
Okay.
I do have one question. Okay, I'm sorry, Jeff, you can go ahead.
Go ahead, Owen.
All right, I was just going to ask about the, the section on, section four, part D on recreational vehicles. These are just being treated as if they're another vehicle being parked on the property. Correct. These are not being treated as if they were habitable at the time that they're within the town premises, are they? Honestly, I don't remember this section. I think it may be something that was already in, in the code.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's an existing, it's already, it's an existing section.
Yeah. So this is really not supposed to address those vehicles one way or the other.
All right.
All right.
Mr. Oakman, did you have a question or a comment?
Oh, yeah, no, just a brief comment. I wanted to, before we, we vote, I just, I just wanted to, you know, thank everybody who's worked on this and to say that, you know, how important I think this is for our community. I think that, you know, as, as Michael said from the, you know, from the, from the master plan, I mean, you know, creating, creating different, different housing types and different opportunities for different demographics is, is critical. And I know, I know there's a lot of regional and national groups that are really pushing for, for these types of ordinances, and I think that this, you know, it may seem minor in some ways, but I think it puts, it lets Princeton be a model for other parts of New Jersey that are, you know, that, that would also benefit from this type of thing. And I just, I hope that we can, you know, continue to advance our housing diversity strategy with, with this, with this as a starting point. So thanks.
Totally agree with that. It absolutely does create a model for other municipalities.
And I'm happy to move that we, you know, approve that this is consistent with the master plan. Is that, is that the motion, Jerry?
Yeah, it would be three parts, that it's consistent with the master plan, that you, we recommend to council that be adopted, and we also recommend that the modifications that I read be adopted as well. I want to de-link the recommendation for adoption of the ordinance and the adoption of the amendment, so it doesn't seem like we're only recommending adoption if they adopt all the ordinance modifications. So it's approval of finding of consistency with the master plan, recommend adoption of the ordinance, and recommend the modifications that we discussed.
And just to be clear, because I did support the idea that you can do, you know, an accessible dwelling unit on a non-conforming lot, you know, according to the, the other specifications that, that Mr. Cohen outlined. If I, if I, if I make the motion that you described, we're moving to, to support it with that change, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so moved.
Like to second that.
Ms. Sax seconded, Mr. Oakman moved it. Do we need a roll call or a voice vote?
I would suggest roll call.
Roll call, please. Good. Carrie? Looks like we might have just lost Carrie again.
No, no.
Oh, and Michael.
So while we're waiting for them to return, I want an announcement, which is council also on Monday night authorized the expenditure of almost $130,000 to make our network stable.
I'm going to click on my little applause icon, if I can find it. Well, I couldn't find it.
Maybe we should just go around and member by member voting affirmative or against it, since we're not sure when Carrie and Michael are going to get back.
I have an email that I think probably has, no, that does not have everybody on it, sorry. Well, Jerry, would you like to do the honors then?
I'll just, okay, Louise?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Is that on?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim? Tim, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
And Owen?
Yes.
And Andrea, I think you're not eligible to vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Mia?
Yep.
Yep, and Andrea, I don't think you're eligible to vote, right?
Let's move on then to ordinance referral, the second. This is the Princeton Affordable Housing Ordinance, number 2020-15. A very important ordinance, and as luck or misfortune would have it, Mr. La Place is not here to get us going on this. Mr. Cohen, do you want to?
I'll, I'll try and.
Oh, here comes.
Well, Mark's here.
So Michael will not be far behind.
Carrie is back on.
Yeah. Go ahead, David.
Okay. So this is a very lengthy document, but a lot of it is kind of boilerplate. Many, much of it is the history, the litigation around affordable housing, the history of affordable housing in Princeton, followed by the rules and regulations that will govern affordable housing in Princeton going forward. For the most part, those are standard UHAC, which is.
Uniform Housing Affordability Controls.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Language that was stipulated in our settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Association. And then at the end, it goes through calculations of the affordable housing units that were provided in prior rounds, our obligation for the third round, and describes exactly how we're going to be meeting those obligations in the third round. This board actually reviewed the settlement agreement for conformity with the master plan back in December, I believe, or maybe early January. I can talk a little bit about some minor changes from that review that the board did at that time, if that would be helpful.
David, could I ask a question? As I went through it, I didn't see a section that laid out how we were going to satisfy our third round obligation. As I went through it, I, I didn't see a section that laid out how we were going to satisfy our third round obligation. This was, as you say, it was, it's boilerplate, it's, it's basically the template that Fair Share Housing Center uses throughout the whole state, and what it does is pull together all the pertinent regulations, but I didn't see anything programmatic.
So honestly, I'm not 100% sure what got forwarded over. There was a document that I reviewed that was called the Housing Plan Element and the Fair Share Plan, but I guess this is.
This, this is different.
This is different. This is yet ordinance that was actually introduced on Monday night.
Right. And as, and as David described, what, what it is, is it pulls together all the pertinent regulations governing affordable housing that come out of UHAC, the Uniform Housing Affordability Control, some Coa stuff, and some of the stuff that's just developed over time in, in Princeton and elsewhere. But there's nothing, you know, there's no bombshells, and there's nothing that comes out of left field.
Okay. I do, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think because that housing plan element are the master plan, this other document that I was referring to, I think that will be coming to the planning board as well for.
It, it has to. In fact, it, it's the only element of the master plan that actually gets endorsed by the council as well. So there's a master plan endorsement, a master plan approval, and then a council endorsement of it.
Okay.
And that, and that's the critical, that's the most critical document.
Okay, but that's not what's before us.
Right, correct.
Apologize for my confusion.
And this ordinance, well, Michael, you're back, Mr. La Place, you're back with us. We, we began discussing this Affordable Housing Ordinance while you were knocked offline. Do you have any comments you want to make on it before the board discusses it?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. What it does is it lays out how the repeal and replacement of certain sections of the codes of the former borough and township, and, and to allow the development of new affordable housing opportunities throughout the municipality. It's to put us in compliance with the New Jersey Fair Share Housing Act. These goals, both creating affordable housing opportunities and being in conformance with the Fair Share Housing Act, are mentioned in our master plan going back as far as the 1990s through subsequent reexamination reports and updates.
Okay. And this, this ordinance is, enables additional ordinances that carry out the specific things that are.
It sort of sets the structure.
Authorized in here, such as the Affordable Housing Board, that's what, you know.
Like the utility, and it, it, all those components that need to be put in place so that we can carry out our plan.
Right, right, okay, yep. So with that, I will open it up to, you know, questions, comments from members of the board before we hear from the public.
Comments?
Yes.
And I'm not sure exactly how to, how to go about this. There are some things in the ordinance, some, some mentions, like names in the ordinance, and, and there's, there's no definition of, of what they are. Look, I'll be specific, and, and again, I, I don't know whether or not you have a copy of the ordinance in front of you. But, but anyway, if you get to Division 5, 10, 10B, 351, the board, they're defining it, and they go through the terms, and then you get down to what would be on, on page 24, for their powers, and then you get to, and then you get to eight, well, it's, it's in all of them. It said with the assistance of a housing manager, and there's no definition of what, of who the housing manager is. So I, you know, it seems like, you know, that's gotta be, you know, in the definition section, you know, but there's, but there's nothing about a housing, I mean, there's administrative agent, there's the, there's the municipal housing liaison, but, but there's nothing in there about who the housing manager is. So I, I think that's one of the things that has to be addressed. I noticed something else. In the ordinance as it is now, the township and the borough ordinance, there is a provision for minimum floor areas. You can, you know, one bedroom has to be a minimum of this size, two bedroom has to be a minimum of this size. There's none of that that's in this particular, that I saw that's in this particular ordinance, but I think that, that should be included. Now, when we get to 363. And I'm sorry about this. I mean, gosh, it's, you know, it takes a little time, and it's boring.
Hard to wade through stuff like this. Take your time.
We appreciate your expertise, Mr. McGowan.
Yeah, that's for certain.
10B, 363, that Housing Trust Fund. Now, it spells out things, I don't have any.
Alvin, I'm sorry, page number?
The page number is 38.
Okay, thanks. Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's fine. The trust fund, or, or in the one that follows, which is use of funds. The town uses money to purchase homes. You know, at a certain, specific time, you know, if someone wants to sell it, the town will, will actually, will actually buy it. And I think the money comes out of the trust fund to do that, which is one reason why you have to have around a large trust fund. I didn't see anything that specifically says that we can do it. It seems that there, it's implied at certain places in the use of, in the use of funds, but I didn't, I didn't see anything where they said specifically that that could be a use.
Alvin, in subsection one, on bottom page 38, it talks about such activities, that is, that can be funded by the trust.
Okay.
Include but are not limited to preservation or purchasing of housing.
Oh, then I missed it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Last year.
Now, as I look back, as far as, and this again, this gets to, to pricing. I already know that, that, that we have to use the UHAC way of, of pricing for resale. We can't use, we can't, we can't use what Princeton's been using. But, but maybe, you know, and I was, I was hoping like Maureen would be here. You see B? The question is.
Alvin, I know that Maureen did read through this very carefully, for what it's worth.
Well, I know she did too, but she, but I still have questions.
Yeah.
Again, you know, and, and I, I don't know necessarily that this is one, but, but, but again, in D, it talks about the development having a 55% for restricted ownership.
What page you on?
I'm on page 15.
Oh, 15.
Did you say 15 or 13?
15, 15.
Thank you.
And I'm looking at, I'm looking at D. Again, this gets really technical, and, and I understand that. But at each affordable demo must achieve, it's like the, it's after the comma, and this is each.
Yep.
An average for restricted overs, over, you know, those, those units. My, 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 my concern is, and maybe, again, Maureen needs to look at this, and this is something else we have to go over. My, my concern is, again, using, if you're gonna use the UHAC Coa rules for pricing, the prices are gonna keep getting pushed up. I don't know how you, I don't know how you're ever gonna get, you're gonna stay at 55%. And so it seems like that's an issue. I don't know that we can solve it. I'm not necessarily saying we can solve it tonight, but someone should, you know, look at that again.
Well, I assume, and I'm not trying to foreclose other, but I assume that because the median income statistics are routinely updated, that it would float with, with median income. Whether it goes up or down, you know, usually it's going up, but is that not the case, Jerry, or others who might know?
Yeah, that's, that's fair to say.
It does, it does, it does it matter, again, when you're calculating a resale price? Well, is that gonna push up? And I, and I don't know this, and this is, but it's, you know, you know, and that's, and that's sort of a question, may, maybe it's not. But I, I just think, you know, you might want to think about that.
Yeah.
Someone needs to think about that. Make sure, just check. It might be just Maureen will sit down and say, no, you're wrong. I can, I can show you, I'll do, you know, I'll, I'll do a few calculations. But I, I, I think the trend is, is gonna be that it gets, that just units are gonna get more expense, quite frankly.
Right.
And, you know, and so when you sell them, you know, that, that median is gonna keep, that median will keep going up. And, and I don't know whether, and I, I don't know why they, they, they put that there. I don't even know if anybody ever thought about what's going on. Maybe, maybe just, just eliminate it at some point, but.
I just want to comment on that, Alvin. I think that there's a balancing act going on here between making sure that the owner who is selling gets a fair return on their equity. You know, they've invested a certain amount into the house during the period that they owned it. And if you keep the price flat, but inflation has gone up, then they're sort of losing money. So I think there's, there's two parties to any sale, and that has to be considered as well.
Well, I, I hear you. You gotta remember, this is totally artificial. Essentially, what's good, what, what's, what's happening? And, and that's another section that's in there that I don't see right now. I, they, I believe it says that the resale price can never be lower than, I'm gonna say the purchase price, because that's, because I'm thinking the way we, we, you know, we, we do this in Princeton.
It can't, but it can't. Can't be lower than the prior resale price.
Yeah.
There is a provision, I, I think, I think I saw it, that says, the, the maximum resale price that's established upon resale cannot be lower than the prior maximum resale price.
So, so again, this is my concern about the upward, you know, the, the upward pressure, not being able to comply with that. Now, again, Princeton has a way of, even with, with, with these rules, of that's not gonna be a problem, even if it were lower, it's, it's still not gonna be, be a problem. But I, I, I'm just saying, that's something else I don't know. You know, that section, I, I, I think someone needs to, to, to think about it, or, you know, nobody raises it. Now, there's something else, and it's not here. In, it's either in the borough rules or the borough, or the borough regs. There are sections that say what the length of the deed restrictions are. Some are, some are 15 years, some are 30 years, some are 99 years. Now, my concern is, I, and I haven't looked at all the borough units, that the deed restrictions probably may have run on some of those. Someone needs to look. Now, can we just say, we'll just, once you adopt this ordinance, does that just automatically void whatever, whatever was prior, it, it's those deed restrictions? Or, or you, again, are you kind of leaving out there, you know, the possibility, somebody will come along and say, hey, wait a minute. Here, here's what the rules were, particularly the rules when I bought it, and, and the deed restriction has run. Now, again, you know, I guess, I guess my, my only solution maybe to, to that, and I think it's in there somewhere, there needs to be some specific language that the town has the option or to, to renew, you know, re- renew the deed restrictions at, at the end of, at the end of the period. That may, that just may do it, that may do it itself, but I don't think, I'm not sure that language is in there, and I'm still worried about that, that other concern, even, even if you get rid of the, the, those sections of the borough ordinance. And the new, go ahead, go ahead.
Two very important points about the length of the deed restriction. There are sections in here that say it's a minimum of 30 years and thereafter until released by Princeton. The exception, and that's straight out of UHAC, and it's mandatory, actually. It's been mandatory since 2004. There's an exception in the ordinance for low-income housing tax credit units, because.
Yeah, I saw that.
Exception in UHAC for that as well, and it, and it's 20 years for that. The separate issue, so I just mentioned that. The separate issue is what do you do as a lot of these units are finding the deed restrictions running? Because now with the new stuff, you know, thereafter until terminated by the municipality, minimum of 30 years, that deals with a lot of stuff that'll be coming online, but stuff that had prior come online and the deed restrictions are running. I mean, we're confronted, as many municipalities are, with the idea that we're gonna be losing a lot of units. Now, it happens, and we did this in West Windsor, that under one of the, the first Coa form deed restriction has a section in it that says a municipality can unilaterally extend the controls, which we, which we did in West Windsor. And we want to see if, if any of the units that you're, you're referring to use, use that form deed restriction, because that does give the municipality some power that it wouldn't otherwise have.
Okay, now, I know when, when it came to Avalon Bay, there was, they didn't want to have the, they wa, I, I think they wanted the deed restriction to expire after 30 years.
Absolutely.
And we went to, and the town went to court.
Yep.
And, and won that, but I don't know if that's, that's a written decision, I don't know if that's an appellate division decision. And, and I just, that's why, I'm just saying, I just want to just put the language in there. Someone should put, put the language in there that, that you can, you can do that, and, you know.
Yeah, that, that is in here now, and in fact, we did go to court, and we did go up to the appellate division and prevailed in both the trial court and the appellate division. They argued, it's 30 years, we argued, no, it's a minimum of 30 years and thereafter until released.
Okay. Okay. I'm almost done. This is just for my information. Again, I guess I have to, I'm gonna ask Jerry this. If you go back to the top, you have sections, certain sections that were eliminated. First things in the borough.
What page you on, Alvin?
I'm on page, like, I guess it would be page one.
Oh, okay. Right.
You go through, first it has articles from, from the borough that were eliminated. What I want to ask you about is you go to section two, article, article 12, affordable housing, like the division, division seven, particularly division seven, and it's, it's renumbered. So it's somewhere else now? It's not, it hasn't been eliminated? It's, it's somewhere else. That's really my, that's really my question.
I didn't quite, I didn't quite follow what section you were talking about.
Okay, now, if you go to, if you go down to, you go section two, article 12, Affordable Housing, Division seven, R, R1, AH, R2, AH, zoning districts? You go through that?
Yeah.
Then you go down, so, so those sections, division, and division seven, 10B, 355, 10B, 356, 10B, 357, and 10B, 58. They haven't been eliminated, but they've been moved somewhere else.
Correct. Yeah, all I've done has been renumbered.
And, and what is, what is 272? Where, what part of, is that part of the zoning code?
It is, yes.
Okay.
These are basically descriptions of two zones, which had been located in the Affordable Housing Section. which had been located in the affordable housing section, which were deemed to more appropriately be located in the zoning section.
Okay, no, that's, that's, that's all I'm asking there. Uh, I think that's it. Oh, well, again, now, again, I didn't look. There were some other comments I had made to the Housing Board. There's a question of fees. And that the municipality should have the opportunity to review the fees. Because what, what happens is, depending on what they are, you know, it's affordable, you know, 30% of low. But then if you add on a fee for this, you add on a fee for that, you know, all of a sudden, it's not affordable anymore. And, and again, I was wondering whether we should have, there should be some language somewhere to say that the municipality has the ability to review, has the ability just to review, and if they want, I guess, you know, reject those fees, or get, or get the developer to explain why they're necessary.
Yeah. Um, yeah, as a general rule, there's certainly a provision here that says that the homeowners association, or HOA, or condo association fees in the special assessments have to be the same for the market units as the affordable units. There's a good reason for that. That's, that was a change from the original concept. But the original concept, which was the opposite, was really just a ripoff by the developers for reasons I don't have to go into. So that's, that's all in here. My understanding from this, and I'd have to go back and look again, but the general practice is if there were these fees that are built into, say, the rent, that's calculated, and when rent, when the rent is calculated by the administrative agent, they take into consideration not just the base rent, but all these fees as well. So it's not that you can, you're permitted to have rent of such and such a level, but then you could have fees which really push stuff up. The fees have to be, are factored into the rent.
Can you please check on that? Because I know that got to be an issue. That really got to be an issue at some points. So if it's there, that's fine.
My, my understanding is certain kinds of fees must be included in the rent, and others don't have to be. I don't know exactly which ones fall in each of those two categories. But Jerry, does that ring true to you?
Not really.
For instance, a parking fee
Oh.
may be allowed to be charged. Well, beyond the rent, whereas, you know, a garbage room fee might have to be included in the rent.
You mean, so if a market owner wants to pay a little bit more money so they have a designated parking space, that will not be included, I guess? And that, that sounds like that very well might be the case, but I'll look into that.
Okay, I think, I think that's kind of covers what I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
So the first thing that you mentioned was the definition of housing manager. And I'm wondering whether, is that, and the second thing too, minimum room sizes, or those are the first two things I wrote down. Are they the kind of things that are incorporated in ordinances that this ordinance gives bias to? Or are they embedded in somewhere else in the code or in the housing element? Where do those things?
Not, not, not that I know, not, not that I know of. And I got, again, I don't have Robbinsville in front of me at the moment, and that was, that's another one that's been approved. It's, it seems that it's in, it's got to be in the ordinance, not in, not in the housing element.
So, it doesn't work in a housing element. It either has to be in this ordinance, and I thought your point was a very good one, unless it's in some other ordinance, you know, some ordinance dealing with personnel. David, you, did you have something?
We had a conversation about the room sizes with our consulting planner, who's been working on the affordable housing ordinances the other day. And he said that there's actually, you know, there are minimum room sizes in the building code, which will ensure that rooms are not made smaller than a certain size. But above that, there's case law that actually works against, that makes setting minimum room sizes that are above what's in the building code not permissible, because it's seen as somehow discouraging the, you know, it's adding, it's cost generative, and it violates some of the other restrictions on affordable housing. So that was the, we had a conversation specifically about that. Jerry, you're looking puzzled like that doesn't.
Yeah, and maybe this case law, I'm just not familiar with it. And.
I mean, he said, it's not room sizes so much, but it's like unit sizes.
It's units, right, it's not.
Well, that's what I'm talking, well, that's what I meant, unit sizes.
Unit sizes.
No, I think he was actually, I think he was saying room sizes, because we were talking about bedroom sizes in particular.
We were talking about it, but the way the conversation went was we said, what's wrong with that? Are you saying it's illegal? He said, well, the room sizes aren't illegal, but the units, you can't regulate the units' sizes, and there's risk that regulating the room sizes will start to regulate the unit size, which is not permissible.
Yeah, but we can't, I mean, you know, you can't have a developer that says to save money, I'm going to, you know, have 500, you know, a two-bedroom, a two-bedroom unit that has a unit size of 500 square feet. I mean, you can't, I mean, and that's, and that's the other side of it.
I understand the concern. I'm just relaying the conversation that we.
I think the state code wouldn't allow that, so that's, that's how it would be handled.
The construction code would not allow, maybe this is something Derek Bridger might want to weigh in on. I don't want to put you on the spot, Derek. You're on mute, there you go.
All right. I mean, I think there are state minimums on room sizes, but I think you often have to kind of shame the developer into doing the right thing. The units will look the same as the regular market rate units. And I don't think you can establish minimum sizes with minimum unit sizes. But you can say that they should all be the same, one bedrooms, you know, when they come before the planning board or the zoning board.
Yeah. I mean, if you wanted, my office could look into that a little bit. As I say, David, I'm not familiar with that case law. And I know, for example, in West Windsor, where we have minimum unit sizes which are higher than the construction code minimum sizes, which is, Alvin points out, are quite small.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
You may be right. It was just one opinion.
Yeah.
And the planner said he's not a lawyer, so he was just playing one in our meeting.
Did you have another question, Louise? Did I?
No, those were the two things I wanted to ask about, whether the room sizes and the, or the housing manager definition was, you know, addressed in some other part of the code or.
I suspect not. Okay, again, this is, you know, I suspect, I said, you know, Maureen sometimes uses the term housing manager for her position. And, you know, if it's going to be there, I think there's going to be a definition of, what is that person? How is that different from an administrative agent? How is that different from, you know, the municipal housing liaison? Those things, you know, what's special about this person?
Yeah, and are these, those other titles that you just?
They're there.
I did, they are there, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So, is this something that we can recommend to council that they add to the ordinance that would not change it, would not result in having to reintroduce it or something like that? Trying to find a solution here, because I.
Well, my opinion, I don't, you're probably only Jerry's, but my opinion is, I don't know that it's, in the end, it might end up being a big deal. Maybe you just get rid of the term, and it's just, you know, the administrative agent or somebody else. It's the same, it's essentially the same job. You know, I mean, you know, maybe you do, but it's, it's hanging out there now, it's just.
I think it's a good thought, and I think a recommendation to council that they define the responsibilities of such a person is a good idea. That could be done with an amendment to the ordinance without having to reintroduce. Because the rule is, you only have to reintroduce if there's a substantial amendment to the ordinance, and substantiality is judged in the context of the entirety of the ordinance. So if you have a 50-page ordinance, which we almost have, and you have, you know, kind of a couple of provisions, they're not going to be substantial enough to require renoticing, reintroduction. And if we want, certainly we can recommend to council that they look into the question of whether they think the Princeton could legally impose minimum unit size by one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, and make a judgment as to whether they wanted to do it and what the number should be. But if this was the pleasure of the board, that the board thinks it's a good idea having such standards, if we lawfully can impose them.
I do, but.
Do other members of the board have opinions to share about that?
I definitely feel we need that definition. I mean, I just found the section that Alvin was referring to. The housing manager is referred to multiple times.
Yeah.
And I can't find the definition either, so we need to include that.
Right, okay. And as to the question of minimum room sizes, Jerry, can you, can you look into that? I want to, certainly not suggesting that we should hold this up until you find your answer, but I do think that if we, you know, pass it back with, you know, we think it makes sense to, within the law, you know, define a minimum room size that is
Yeah.
defensible in court, you know.
I mean, it really is a unit size rather than a room size, I think.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I'm concerned with, are you sure I can look into that? First thing I would do, who mentioned this? Was it Michael Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes, it was Michael. I would reach out to him, and he might be aware of some case law that I'm not aware of.
Okay.
Now, the only thing I guess I want to raise, can this ordinance still be amended at some later time? I have a larger, I have a larger issue, but I kind of may want to discuss it with Jerry first. It revolves, again, it revolves around the applicant who wants to donate land in lieu of building the units, and what standards there are, you know, that somebody's got to look at.
Yeah.
You know, to make sure that, you know, that it's okay. And it gets passed to.
Just hypothetically, right, Alvin? You're not a particular piece of land.
But, but I'm just, if it could be amended at a later time, you can just put this through now, and I'll just, I can go back and forth with you or with this, Jerry, to see, get your.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I have my own point of view in terms of payments in lieu of units. And in my other towns, I say, don't take the money, because you never know what to do with it. We always have trouble spending it. Make them build the units. But that's, that's just where I come from generally.
Yeah, I mean, and I think, just to reassure you, Alvin, you know, one of the provisions in the settlement agreement was to extend the affordable housing overlay to the entire municipality. So going forward, any residential development is responsible, you know, over five units is responsible for 20% affordable units.
Okay.
Get it on site. The problem with the application you're thinking about is that it came in before that change was made.
But, but there's still, okay, I still have a standard question there. I mean, apparently, what we're talking about here is, and I think it's in the land use ordinances now, it's up, it goes to council to approve, to approve what that transfer, if you will, it goes to council. So what is, so what is, so what does council, so what does council look at to make, to see that it, that is? I mean, and that's, that's still it. And I think it may even provide that there, the council has, they can make the rules to do that. I, I think, I read that quickly. But I mean, that, I mean, that's kind of a rather, that's an issue of rather large one.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And they get very generous benefits when they donate land in terms of additional market units.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Yeah. And under the cluster ordinance.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Louise, what I would suggest with respect to the unit size is that we leave it aside for now in the sense of a recommendation back to council, because council is coming up very shortly.
Yes.
It looks like the case law supports the idea of a minimum lot size, that I report back, maybe consult with, with Michael on what that should be. And we could propose an amendment to the, to the ordinance sometime in the near future.
Okay.
That would be great to get this sooner rather than later. The plea could affect another negotiation that is.
Yeah, understood. Okay.
Okay, that was it.
Thank you for giving it such a close look and raising those important matters. Are there other questions or comments or motions?
I do have one, one other question, which is, you know, it may be, maybe splitting hairs. It may also be something that we don't have much control over because of the way that New Jersey finds things. But I'm looking at the definition on page seven of inclusionary development, a development containing both affordable units and market rate units. It seems to me that there's a distinction between an inclusionary development, which is something that is, has, has, has both affordable and market rate units in it as a result of the inclusionary plan and zoning requirements, and simply a mixed income development that has both affordable and market rate units, but not necessarily as a result of these requirements. And I'm wondering, I'm thinking about, like, you know, there's this, you know, there's the limit of, you know, it's five units or more, or six units or more, we have to have an inclusionary affordable unit. But what about like a three-unit building where, you know, housing issues of Princeton has one of those units as an affordable unit that they maintain is affordable, but it's not, like, no one's getting COA credit for it? And it's not like this definition would seem to put, put that project sort of under the inclusionary rules when it, when it really is not intended to be. And maybe it's written in such a way that that wouldn't be included, but I just felt like that definition.
Loophole. That's one of the loopholes in this. You never build, you never have a project where you build more than three or four units. You never, I don't think you ever have the requirement to include an affordable unit.
Actually, well.
I mean, just. Right, but that's sort of what I'm saying. An inclusionary development implies that you, that the affordable is there because of a requirement, but that's not always true in a mixed income development.
And on the other end, Jeffrey, you're right. I mean, there are 9% tax credits for mixed income projects that are not inclusionary in the sense that they're 80/20, and the affordable units are provided by the developer at no cost.
It's a specific category.
So.
Narrow category, the mixed income category.
It is, but the point is that the definition is imprecise. That's.
I mean, I think that it may be, it may only be like a small definitional question, but I think where it becomes substantive, you know, David, that's a good example, would be if, if because this definition widely, you know, is wide enough to include that project, it then implies that that project has to meet requirements that otherwise it wouldn't have to meet, because it's under, it falls under this definition, because it's mixed income, but it's not necessarily an inclusionary project.
I'm not sure the definition has any real functional significance. I mean, there's obviously a whole detailed set of regulations dealing with what's required in terms of affordable housing. But I don't think any of that is a function of whether it meets the definition of inclusionary development. This is a class, the classic definition of inclusionary development. Michael, do you want to jump in on this?
No.
I knew you were going to say that.
I don't think I can add any clarity to it. I just would remind the board that their fundamental responsibility this evening is to see that this is, you know, consistent with the master plan. And also, please keep in mind that the municipality is on a very tight timeline for the entire affordable housing effort.
Reality check from Mr. La Place.
Yeah, I mean, based on Jerry's point, if that is in fact the case, you know, I'm happy to, to drop the question. I just thought it was, it was worth, you know. you know, chat on it.
And as to the narrow question of whether this ordinance is consistent with the master plan, I'd be happy to move that if it hasn't already been moved, board find the ordinance consistent with the master plan and recommend it to council for adoption.
David, do you want to include in that, adding a definite, that we recommend adding a definition of housing manager?
I would like to add that, and I honestly, I can't remember if any of Alvin's other comment wrote to the level of being.
Jeez, thanks, David.
Well, I think that the other ones were addressed, but I, I could be wrong, so I'm not, I don't want to put, but the, we talked about the minimum unit size, we talked about length of deed restriction and what happens, uh.
That, yeah.
And also controlling fees.
Yeah.
Housing manager definition.
That's the.
That was, that's the.
That was the first one.
Big outstanding one.
Yeah.
So are you going to include, well, you don't have to worry about, well, the fees, do you want to include that, a definite, something that, I couldn't remember whether, Jerry, did you say that that's already existing?
I think there's a section, I mean, certainly that the general practice is that most fees, and David made a, said, made a distinction, that there are some fees that aren't included in this category, but most fees are included as part of, for the.
For the rent, okay.
Right, right.
But I think it's worthwhile, I, I'd be happy to take a second look at this ordinance, and if I think it needs a little work, and the same with the point with respect to the, the size of the units, come back and make a recommendation to the board that, that a amendment be prepared, and be submitted to the council.
All right, so David has moved, uh, this item, do I have a second?
No, seconded.
Thank you, thank you, Alvin, okay, Carrie, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Miss Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Well, that's a good, good discussion, and lots of good business done tonight, and there's nothing else on the agenda, so David.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
There's a chorus of seconds.
Julie seconded.
Bye.
All right. Bye. Bye. Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Louise.